We are observing Veterans Day today, so we would like to extend our thanks to all of our veterans and thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Vaughn, would you start out just by explaining to the public that viewing in, we really don't have any members of the public here tonight? We do have some administrators and department heads, but why we're calling to order a public hearing tonight?
Absolutely. The school district has been named agents to expend the special education expendable trust that exists for the purpose of being able to cover unanticipated special education costs. In order to expend those funds by RSA, we need to have a public hearing that allows the public to give input into the process and into the expenditures that are made. So that's what we're here.
Can we just give maybe a little, just a, you know, nothing majorly detailed, but why we're going to be asking to, we're going to need to expend these funds?
Sure. So the reason, every year we budget anticipating how many students we might be placing out of district as a result of either a court placement, which is due to a court action for something related to abuse and neglect or delinquency, or anticipating students who behaviorally, to some degree, are outstripping the regular education placement and therefore might require something more restrictive. Typically, we try to keep in reserve one placement, anticipating that we might have one student that might move into our district that would take over that place. Last school year, we had a student move into district that took over the place. We also had another student that had to be transferred out of district. So going into this school year, we already had no extra places available because those moves occurred during, after budgeting had already been done. Going into now, this school year, we have students who have been placed due to court action as a result of a delinquency or abuse or neglect petition, and then also a student that we have had to place out of district as well on our own behalf. Therefore, that leaves us in a position where we, unless we have a student that happens to move out of district who is already placed in a private provider location, we will need to be accessing the student trust fund. Trust fund was set up for this purpose. That should, should something like this occur, someone moves into the district or due to court action, it's outstripped our ability to provide for it in the general fund, that this exists as a safety net.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. So the public hearing will remain open until 7:08 PM. We are going to conduct regular school business since we don't have anybody to provide any public input or participation at this time. If any members of the public do want to come up to the high school and speak or ask questions about this particular fund, you can do so until 7:08 and we will stop the meeting, take a pause while members of the public, if they do decide to come up and want to speak to us. Otherwise, we'll move forward with our regular agenda and...
I'll make a motion to table the minutes until our next meeting on November 19th.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to table the minutes as we still need to review some. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. All those in favor? All right. And I will mention that Mrs. Cardinal is excused this evening as she is out of state enjoying a family wedding that occurred over the weekend. New business.
Okay. We have, the first is a change in our student assistance program, and I'm going to be bringing specifics to you under contracts later on. But we've been running this program as a contracted service. Our contracted service provider is no longer going to be able to provide that service. However, the counselor that had been working with this program is able to work for us as opposed to working as a contracted service. So we are going to be talking about those pieces later on, but letting you know that those changes are imminent. And that would be a mid-year, like now swap as opposed to moving down the road because the change has been fairly recent.
What's the name of the service provider?
Service provider is Live Free Recovery, New Hampshire. The counselor that is working with them recently decided to end her employment with them as opposed to try to find another counselor for a position that is really very sensitive. We asked if she would be, if she'd been hired anywhere else, she hadn't, we asked if she would be interested in coming onboard. For the duration of the grant, we cannot, we explained, we cannot extend her employment beyond the obligation of the grant. She was willing to do so. I checked with DHHS, who is the funder for the grant, if this would be permitted. They indicate that it is absolutely permitted. We've done the work to put together a job description and a contract that we would put forward for your review.
And what is the duration of the grant?
It ends this June, but we have the opportunity, it will be brought forward to governor and council toward the end of this school year for it to be extended to September 2020.
We don't know if that will happen.
We don't, but it's been explained to the individual that at this point, June is the end of the contract, and she understands that.
So that's when the contract would end because the grant would end?
Correct.
And we wouldn't have funds to find a service provider otherwise at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So what happens to the service?
Unfortunately, unless we were to put it in our general fund going through the following school year, it would no longer exist. I anticipate that governor and council will, and again, it's anticipate, I anticipate governor and council will approve it for going through September 2020.
And describe for me a little bit just the service that's provided.
Sure. So the counselor has, I think, about, I want to say about 70 students on her caseload at this time. It services grades seven through 12. Groups that come together are individual and group services. They have counseling groups addressing children who are families that live in substance abusing families, whether it's a relative or a close friend. They have another group that deals with what they call kind of coping, coping with, you know, transition to adult life, talking about, you know, what it might look like to, to live a drug, a drug-free existence after high school, getting an apartment, you know, all those pieces that you need in terms of, you know, building your own life. They also deal with siblings of substance users, friends of substance users, newcomers, which are students that are new to our school district within the last two to three years, having an opportunity to meet them and kind of, you know, find out a little bit about what they might need or might be struggling with. But the focus is on drug and alcohol use prevention.
Is that service written into any IEPs?
No.
Okay. Any questions on that?
You asked the one I was going to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other new business, I saw you had something there.
I do. I did receive word on NEASK in the last week, so it's not on here, but it's kind of old business, new old. We are looking at this point for our site visit to be in 2021 under the new standards. What that will mean is that our budgeting will change. Instead of having budgeted the $15,000 for the site visit for next year, we'll be budgeting $1,500. There's a small site visit to kind of set up the shift in the standards, and then we'd be looking at 2021. While it does put things back, I think it's a better thing for our school for a number of reasons. One, it puts us in line for a more compact number of standards that are better targeted to what it is we're looking to do with competencies and moving forward instead of trying to check off a lot of things on a checklist that have shifted, or our direction has shifted somewhat from where those are. It's a better dovetail rather than it being an add-on of, here's another list of things you also have to do. It's better aligned with where we're headed. It also is a shortened process, so it's also much more economical for us to get the information that we need, the feedback that we need around our process and where we're going without it being as much of a financial burden to the community to be able to sustain that. So...
Was this our choice to go to 2021, or this is what they assigned us?
In order to do the new standards, this is what they assigned us, for us to stay where we were. It was going to be a rush and fall in between our budget cycles. So this was a better, better fit all the way around.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? You know, it's my question, so we're just going to steal each other's questions. Any other new business from the board? Old business, you think?
Let's see. Copiers, I did mention last week. We do have a brief update on that. It looks like things are going to be remaining relatively flat, which is what I had budgeted. So I will be getting the formal presentation on that. Mark and Jen and I will be meeting with them, I believe it's the 15th, which would be Thursday? Or am I, no, it's Wednesday. It's Wednesday afternoon. But in generalities, it looks like it's going to be pretty much where we are now. So...
Excellent, Mrs.
Yeah.
Any old business from the board? All right. We have some budget presentations tonight. Oh, we have an SAU presentation?
Well, I'm just, I'm going to give you the SAU budget. This is not a formal presentation. The largest piece of the SAU budget changes is a proposal that the administrative assistant to the superintendent become a full-time position in light of a couple of things with our findings, with our recent audits. One of the things that we are having to do is institute a number of changes in how many people are involved in a process for food service approvals, for free and reduced lunch, just to make sure that we have additional eyes on what's happening. A good portion of that has fallen to Jess. Also in addition, looking at the changes coming down the road that were detailed so very thoroughly last week about H.Bill 1612 and the security requirements around that. That will also require a great deal of additional human resource information being managed in a different way. And most of that has also fallen to my assistant. She's also working quite closely with Mr. Gazer and doing quite a bit of the, like I said, the food service, and she's also been picking up some of the pieces for facilities and for technology. So it's becoming a position that she has lots and lots to do and not a whole lot of time to do it. The compliance is going to be extremely important, and we're running out of hands to pick up the extra compliance pieces. As you look at the additional pieces, the majority of this is fairly steady from last year. There's a slight increase in the technology hosted section, and that's going to be part of the, as we're now having ADS system as a hosted system. The, that is the, those are the majority changes. And again, increases across the board were ballparked at 2%, and again, that's entirely up to the board to be reviewing and discussing.
Questions from the board about this budget proposal?
I do have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
First off, the contracted services for SAU, is that, what actually is that?
$1,500.
That... The line 18?
Right. That was actually carried over from previous year, and I'm going to strike that.
So there shouldn't be anything there?
No, I'm going to strike that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the other one, the other line, I had a question on line 22 for travel?
Yes.
Are we just not budgeting anything for that? Was that because there were two different locations for the SAU?
No, that had been, that's reimbursement for out of district if any of us are going to pieces that are required for the positions, such as my going to SLC for board meetings. And that was an oversight, but I will lower that because we certainly haven't been budgeting that, and I will leave that at 800.
800? Okay. And then my only other one was for the dues and the fees for SAU, line 24?
Yes.
That just looks tiring. Is that, is that on track?
Yes, that includes the National School Administrators Association, the National School Business Officers, and, and I just lost the acronym for what Diana's in.
New Hampshire Special Educators and Administrators.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we discussed when we hired Mr. Gazer that we wanted that in there.
Yes, that includes, yes. Yep.
So just the, the addition of halftime took the original blue budget from 1.79% increase to almost a little over five? Five percent?
The increase is a little over $9,000. So... Yeah. So the other, the other increases are largely attributed to the position salaries. Along with that, there were questions last week about course reimbursement for administrators. And as one administrator does fall into this position, I'll go ahead and give you this These are, they're listed twice by administrator and by date. And as you can see, only one of those with the arrow was paid from a district line. The rest of those had all traditionally been included in the, the account lines. If you look at the 11, 14, 30, 14 is the only district line that's included there. The rest of them were all, all had been included in the school level lines for course reimbursement. What we've done this year is pull those out. It does show that as separate, but...
Why you made the list? So what will they be under now? Will they all be listed under?
They're listed under the administrative lines, so they are either listed under the administrative lines for their individual schools, or for those that are at the SAU for the SAU line. Actually, Lee, it falls under Melissa's line, but an administrative line under the 2022 town, I believe.
I think one of the questions we asked is, is it included in their contract?
It wa, it is for the principals.
Right.
Yeah. But the other question was where, where they were paid from, so...
Anything on the, more questions on this? Mrs. Tanner, good evening. We opened a public hearing at 6:08 and it runs through 7:08. And I said anybody who came in during the public hearing that wanted to participate publicly could. I wasn't sure if you were here for that purpose.
No, I thought this was your regular meeting.
We're kind of, we're kind of running them sort of like simultaneously, so...
I didn't go back to seven, but...
No, no, no. We're running our regular meeting now too. Do you have any public input at this time?
Not at this moment.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to come back around to that anyway, but I just wanted to make sure you weren't here for something like that, so... Okay. I guess we'll have Mrs. Peabody present the athletic budget proposal.
I printed what you had there. And I don't know if you saw the email. The answer was yes. Yes.
Different from the P one? You keeping a pile for Mrs. Cardinal?
I also want to apologize, there was some CBL and I have to get back into my...
I fixed those too.
I appreciate that. Sure, everybody, please, athletic director from high school and budget for Henry Wilson. Just presenting my budget. There really aren't a lot of major changes. We do have a couple that I just wanted to point out to you. One is a request, if you can do it. In the last year, I mentioned that in future, I would like to have a trainer on staff. I did some research and I found that there are schools that have a contracted service just for home games, and I have found access, I must say, I don't look for others, but at this point, I have access sports, medicine that would cost $500 for all our home athletic events. So that is one request. Another area that I did have a slight increase, well, that's not slight, a pretty big increase, was a student leadership conference. We usually only have two students, and I'd like to increase that. I do have a little bit of funds through our leadership program, I could fund for some of it, but I'd like to get more kids involved in it. I figure if we inundate the school with student leaders and teach them how to do that appropriately, the brand and culture of the athletic programs and plus the school will be that much better off. I've gone down 1,000 in the uniforms, so I thought that might balance each other off as well. Umpires and referees went up very, very little, but that's not because of me, the arbiter's got a $2 increase, so for game, so that whopping $2, I'm sure will help them out later at home. So that's one reason for the increase for us.
Let me jump in there.
Sure.
The increase wasn't payment to officials, it was payment to the arbiter?
No, I'm sorry, it's payment to officials, $2 each.
Okay. Okay. I thought it was to the program that you use.
It goes through the arbiter, is the way I said that.
Right. So officials are getting a $2 increase.
Correct.
$2 a game.
Yep.
Otherwise, the supplies are basically the same things that we get every year, the balls, the bats, things like that. Uniform certificates, trophies. I would like to get new soccer nets next year. Not, we have some, some, the soccer poles, but I would like to get some new nets because they're pretty dilapidated in that regard. But other than that, to be honest with you, the other increase would be the boys volleyball. I put that in there. So that, as far as, oh, I didn't put this up here. As far as the increase for, for stipends, that went up a little bit because of that.
So the athletic trainer's not in this budget now?
Yes, it is.
Where is it?
You're not going to, yeah.
I did put it in, hold on.
Because I don't see it.
All right.
It had its own special, a new line that, that Ruth Ellen so graciously put that in there. But it was $4,500, I can tell you that.
You know what? I don't see it here, and I know that I, I put it in, so let me go back and find that for you. I may not have...
What did you do, like the contracted services line?
I did, and I apparently didn't click the save that piece when I printed it, so let me go back and do that for you.
Mrs. Peabody, did you just take the number of games, give them the number of games, and then they, they kind of quoted us?
They do it for some other schools already, so they know we have the same amount. So, yeah, that's, they know.
Okay.
It's just high school, though. They didn't do it for middle school. It's for high schools.
Yeah.
So in that, it would add the $4,500 to that bottom line?
Okay.
Thank you.
Because what do we do now for football games?
We contract out for that.
Okay.
We have to, the NHA makes us do that.
Yeah, that's the one sport where it's an absolute...
It's definitely highly encouraged by the NHA to have that, to be honest with you. In the last couple of years since, since I've been here, I truly believe that we would have had a student that was in a life-threatening situation this fall at another school, and he was, he had to get rushed to the hospital. And if he, it wasn't caught in time by the trainer, he would have been in, in serious trouble. I know Newt had a, a player at a basketball game that also had to cardiac arrest, basically, and a trainer was there to, to assist with that as well. With concussions nowadays, I always get very nervous. Also, by the way, that $4,500 includes impact testing for all our athletes, and they do all that. We don't have to do it, the trainer would do all that. So that, that is part of the, the deal with the $4,500. If you know what impact testing is...
That's the concussion protocols.
It's like a, a test that you give each athlete, it's like a baseline, like how their brain works before they start the season. So if they get a concussion, they do another test to see how that affected them. It's, 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 most other schools do that, so...
Does it include pre-game wrapping and things like that?
Correct.
There's, yeah. The other issue is, not that it's that far, but the response time is a little further now for, you know, local paramedics because they're not centrally located downtown.
Honestly, I think it's a great investment.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Paramedics will be in Rochester.
Yeah, well, you know, you're talking, I'm a layperson in that area, so... It's like, it all means the same to me, and I'm sure it's different, but that's not my world.
The people on the ambulance don't get here as quickly. But on that note, I did see that they were offering free CPR and...
First aid training.
First aid training. So I don't know if that's something that will benefit the district at all.
Our coaches do that now, to be honest with you, and it's, they do a wonderful job, but it's such, when you're dealing with concussions and/or fractures and things like that...
Oh, I was looking at another line that you had, training.
Yeah, they'll still have to, they'll still do that. Because they have practices and, because they're not going to, you know, the trainer won't be there for practices. So I still, will need my coaches to do that.
And what the, the town does, it's a free training. You do have to pay for your certificate, which is, I think, $17 apiece. So we've had several staff members go through. It's been a really good resource for us.
I apologize, the computer, they're not talking to each other, so I did it with PowerPoint, but it's just everything I'm saying.
If you want to send it to me, then I can put it in the packet.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions about this budget? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hamilton High School.
No? Mr. Roberts, we're going to switch. Okay. We can switch.
Who'd that, who'd that fill in? I like Lynn's tiger shirt. She just looks tigerish to me.
Let me keep one and pass the rest to the best.
Paul, do you need a printout?
Yeah. I have, yeah, I've got it here.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely.
Sorry, I should have asked that.
Maybe.
Everybody freeze.
I was not sure what you were dying about for a minute there. I'm okay now. I was a little worried about you, but we're good.
It's all right.
I'll tell you later.
It gets a little funky sometimes.
Yeah, it was going to be long.
Really?
I'm excited.
Just a tad.
I'm going to have so much room in my freezer.
It gets a little funky sometimes.
Yeah, it was gonna be long.
Really?
I'm excited.
Just a tad.
I'm gonna have to look for my freezer. Now, I'm kind of bummed that they're doing the board drive on Friday, because I've got to set up and everything on Saturday. Sunday, I'm supposed to do the board drive on Friday. I can't move anything on Saturday. So, I'm kind of bummed about that.
Should've seen me trying to move in this weekend.
Okay. Do you have any bags for the projector? There was a bag, projector with cords and stuff in it, when I took it in the PJ.
Oh.
The projector arrived in the bag, didn't it? Okay, so, okay.
Unless it was accidentally packed with his stuff.
Done.
He's home on Thursday. Mr. Roberts?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I guess, looking over, at the bottom line to start with of the budget, it does come in about 7% higher than last year's budget. As you can see, the following items really account for most of the increases in those salaries and benefits, according to the CBA. Staff development, course reimbursement, those are probably my two biggest items that were really out of my control. The following items that we, that also contributed was the office equipment replacement line. You know, the carpet in the office is probably, I'm guessing, 16 years old. You can see where people have walked on it, and it's just, it doesn't get cleaned as well as it could, even though the custodians I know clean it. And so what I'm asking for is to retile the office floor. The other big items, I'm not gonna go line by line, I'm just gonna kind of hit some of the bigger items. Library supplies and magazine subscriptions is another one that shows a big percentage increase. Again, the librarian is trying to make the library, library to be more user-friendly, and so a lot of those supplies come, come with that in mind. With the subscription part, the Common Core standards require that kids be able to read from informational text along with literature, and she wants to basically update those subscriptions that the, that the library has currently had.
Mr. Roberts, excuse me. When you, when you bullet a particular line, can you tell us what line it is?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Corresponding line, just so we can jump to it a little quicker.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let's see, the library in line?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six?
Yeah, well, that's the last one anyway, in the lines, but.
Looks like sixty-seven, sixty-six and sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Again, the updating, like I said, for the magazine subscription is to meet the Common Core standards for informational text and literature. The other line that's a fairly high-budgeting percentage increase, new, the new equipment line under general education, this would be line number twenty-three. Again, there is a demand for some standing desks and for alternative seating. Again, usually the alternative seating is like that ball seating allows kids to fidget, but still basically be able to work at their desks. The standing desks are proving to be really popular, and they almost have to be doled out like in 15 to 20-minute increments. And also, I was reading a while back that there's been some studies that show that if you stand up and work for a while, it actually increases the flow to your blood, the flow of blood up into your brain for it. But again, for the students, it's, it's kind of a nice break from those, from always sitting. It gets them up moving. The assemblies was the other one that would be a large percentage increase. That would be line thirty. Currently, this budget line is used by the, I believe it's a Tiger presentation that's done through Plymouth State College, which really focuses on culture and climate within the school, within the students. I would like to add a couple of STEM assemblies done by basically the math scientists at Maine. Number one, they come really highly recommended. And like I said earlier, when my wife and my granddaughter saw them, my wife, who's not a big science person, came back and she had the business card and said, these guys are worth getting. And so I'm assuming if they can impress someone who is a non-science person like my wife, they're probably pretty good. So, I, you know, and what I've, and talking to them.
They come very highly recommended.
Yeah, and talking to them also, I, I really got a feel, the feeling I got over the phone was, is that it's a very professional and competent organization. Because one of the things that they were talking to me about was, well, what units, what units in science do you study in different grades? Because they can move their presentations around. So if the presentation is for kindergarten first, they can have presentations that go along with some of the STEM units that they've been doing in science, and the same for second and third grade. These are the following trade-offs that you'll see in the budget. Consumables, which would be line?
Twenty-one? Yes.
Yes, it would be, line twenty-one. Kindergarten is the, is the only grade that wants to continue with the, with the Reading Wonders workbook. And grade three, we've been getting some resources to help with the Eureka Math Program. But grade two, there's really no consumable books that they want, and so that accounts for the, the budget decrease. Software, which comes out of Mr. Pringle's department, which I believe is on line number? Thank you, twenty-two. The software that he wants and what he's asked for is simply is maintaining what he has right now. It sounds like he has, over the past couple of years, gotten a lot of new software that he's now integrating in. And so this year, his request for software was much lower. Physical education, again, most of her, this would be line sixteen. Her requests this year were in core, trying to meet standards one and two in the phys ed curriculum for motion and catching, and so she's only asking for those two things of rubber rings and fleece balls. Most of the other equipment that she has is in really good shape, and so that's also one of the budget cuts that we were able to do a little bit. And guidance supplies, which was the last one, this would be line forty-two. What she was asking, what she's asking for, and she has a lot of little stuff that she uses now for the bucket filler celebrations and for her anti-drug stuff, and so this was another line where we were able to show a decrease. And so I, I realized that these will not all offset each other, but when I was trying to put together the budget, I was trying to look at really the, the six things that make up the, the vision that the superintendent has for the district. And basically, what I feel like I've done is I've been able to support items one, two, and three, and I've had some, and have been able to do some budgeting for, for five and six.
Questions for, is that it, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Roberts? I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Line twenty-six. Lighthouse.
Lighthouse is, it's a group that is run by the third grade, and it's a group of, group of third graders where the teacher is their supervisor. And they put out applications. The kids have some writing that they have to do. They have to speak in front of the teachers, and then they're voted in. Every time we do an assembly, I work with the lighthouse group to basically, the kids will end up running most of the assembly. Last week, when we did the Veterans Day, it was her third grade students that did a lot of the reading throughout that assembly.
They essentially function like student council for the elementary.
They meet after school?
After school.
Yeah.
Target team?
Target team.
I, in my mind, I think I know what these are, but I want to make sure I do.
Yeah, no. Target team is a group of people that's chaired by Cindy Barry, and what they look at is if teachers have concerns about a student's behavior, they get together, look at, talk about what's going on. There's some diagnostics that they do, and then try to come up with a plan as to how to help this kid basically improve. That team meets mostly during the day, and it's actually, I think it's a regularly scheduled Monday that they meet.
My question is, why is that a stipend? Because in, in my experience with target teams is that they take place during the day. I believe Farmington High School has one. And I, I wonder if that's really contractually, we're contractually obligated to pay a stipend for that.
Right. And my question would be, is that meeting during their prep time, in which there would be a, a trade-off, or is that meeting separate? Is it meeting during contract time?
For the teachers that come, it would be during, would sometimes be during their prep time. Sometime, we might have somebody covering it. It's a, it's a regularly scheduled time.
But for the team or for the teachers who are meeting with the team?
For the teachers that are meeting with the team. The team is Cindy Barry, Allison Williams, and several specialized case managers along with a teacher.
Okay.
I, I think sometimes, and I.
I might be wrong, but I think sometimes it also meets after school.
Right.
It can run as late as four, so.
Yeah.
And I know that, I've seen them meet at Tevin in the morning as well, so.
I did, I haven't seen target team. Is the target team at Farmington High School or Henry Wilson School getting stipends?
That is part of the stipend review that we're looking to, to bring to you.
I think we need to be really careful.
Yep.
Or we're gonna then stop paying stipends to come to faculty meetings. I mean, I think it can get a little out of hand. Sorry, I just.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, there's some things that are just the function of your day that we, you know, extracurricular, I'm not sure that falls under that, but that's just my opinion. I, I do have another question.
Sure.
Sorry?
Were you gonna ask about the safety teams, too?
That's also.
I wasn't, only because, okay, go ahead, yeah. Ask, she's asking about the safety teams.
Safety team right now is voluntary. We meet after school from three to four. We meet on a regularly scheduled Monday once a month. The goal is to review any drills that we do, fire drills, evacuation. Also, the goal, another goal is to review our emergency operations plan. And it's also just have more sets of eyes looking when they're going about their day. You know, if you're out doing recess duty, look at the apparatus. Is there anything that we need to inform agents about? And so those are kind of, in the nutshells and the goals of what the safety team is.
And that wouldn't be, I mean, as someone who goes on duty often, I, wouldn't it be my job to make sure that the, the structures are, are safe if I'm out there watching children?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it gets reported back to me. And that's, I'm just asking them to be more, I'm asking everybody to be eyes and ears, but especially the people on the safety team.
My question, my additional question was about assemblies. The Tiger Assembly.
Yeah.
Been coming here for years.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I know that you're new to this role, so, so forgive me, this may just be a question to ponder.
Yeah.
Does it work? And how do we know? It may be something just to ponder. When we're looking, you know, when we're looking at assemblies and trying new things, you know, in climate and culture is always something that we want to improve, and, and we've heard some concerns about some of the behavioral types of things and some of the things that Tiger addresses.
Right.
My question is, does it still work? And how do we know? Do we measure it in any way? And is there something better out there? Is there something newer? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what it looks like anymore. It's been a number of years. But I just think we should be asking ourselves that every year, as opposed to, oh, we're gonna budget for it because we did it last year. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just something to ponder.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Questions?
I just actually had a follow-up question on the, the stipends.
Yeah.
There's an overall increase over last year of over $4,000. Does that mean that one of these teams is new this year and wasn't last year, or have the numbers increased within?
Do you want me to answer that one, Paul? Light, Lighthouse has been in existence. That has not been a paid position. Safety team and Target, neither of those have been stipended in the past.
So those are all new as of this year?
Well, what, Safety Team is new, Target Team has met, and Lighthouse has met.
But they haven't been a stipend position until this budget's.
But the leadership things have?
The leadership has met. I don't believe it's been a budgeted position, budgeted stipended position at the high, at Valley View. There have been kind of rotating team leaders, but it's not been a stipended position the same way as at the other two buildings, which needs to change.
So the notes, so the music concerts, the art show are per the CBA.
Correct.
So I don't, I'm not necessarily sure why there's a note there, because that's something that we should have been paying all along.
Correct.
Or are we increasing the amount of shows?
Nope. Nope, those remain the same.
So, it's, okay.
I think that needs to be a conversation we have on, on whether or not we want to include all of these stipends, or if there's a, a better way to arrange.
Well, to me, it's a conversation you have during collective bargaining. It's not just something that's thrown into the budget and then we stop paying it, because guess what? Then it's owned.
Right.
Okay, now, maybe we want to own it, but that's not the process, in my opinion, to do it. It's just start it by throwing it in the budget. There's, there's a conversation to be had, I think.
I think there's a conversation to be had, but I also think that it's something that can happen throughout the workday versus a stipend being paid.
Other questions about this budget? Anything for Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
For real this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one for Mrs. Cardinal. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Gardner, Principal of Franklin High, Farmington High School. Sorry. So this is our 2019-20 budgetary considerations for the high school. This budget accounts for educational resources, textbooks, supplies, materials, equipment, personnel, technology necessary for teachers to operate as professionals in an efficient and effective manner. Our high school budget is based on submittals made by our teachers, to supervisors, and net administration. It addresses the needs of staff in order that they may afford our children the best possible delivery of curriculum instruction in a fiscally responsible manner. And what I put here was the 2018-19 budget total, and then I put the 1920. And you will notice that there is a decrease. A large part of this decrease, though, is attributed to the movement of personnel within the district. So I kind of wanted to put that out there, because it does look like a really nice decrease for the high school. But like I said, that was because we had some transfer of personnel. So what I highlighted here, and I have the line items, like the numbers, and then these two, I have the line items for you to follow. I wanted to highlight anything that had a difference of $500 or more. So the first one is our HiSET testing. We've had more students in HiSET this year, which has been great. They are doing an excellent job. So that budget just went up by $500. So that was an increase over, we're asking for $2,500 versus the $2,000 from last year. Computer science supplies. That is an increase of $726.52. That incorporates the ink that we have for our new printer. And that is located upstairs in where we have our computer classes in technology. Am I going too fast? Our steam supplies, last year was 800. This year, we are seeing an increase of $1,407.78. So steam, we're trying to build up our program. We do a lot of great things. I even went to a robotics competition this past weekend. We're slowly getting the supplies. There was not enough in budgeted last year, so no supplies. She has a lot of supplies left over from last year, but she does need a lot of new supplies going forward in order to maintain that program and grow that program. The biggest increase, it's just kind of a switch. So last year, we had the software license for GED, which we know actually now is HiSET. But what we are doing is, we are moving it under electronic learning fees. And that is our Edmentum and our Play-Doh. So we had started piloting that program this year. We have six students using Play-Doh throughout our day right now. We've had one student already complete three courses on there. We're looking into getting some HiSET prep classes online. I just got the colt for that. So that is the biggest increase. There's actually a $4,000 increase in that. That is school-wide. It's not just for the HiSET program. Like I said, we have six regular students on there now, yes?
It's an increase to $4,000, not a $4,000 increase, correct? The athletic trainers in this one?
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, because it was 900.
It's not line 105.
I don't think it's line 105, though.
Oh, no, look.
Oh, it's 106, okay.
Oh, sorry.
There it is.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
Yes, and I think I put it, that it was an increase of 4,000 because last year, you're right, we didn't have any money in that line. It was a zero budget. So to me, that was an increase. Another big area is our new equipment. And in there, we have a lot of kind of additional items. The new kiln is in there. I don't know if this was bought up last year, but our kiln, that was almost 30 years old. Almost caught fire last year. Our facilities maintenance gentleman had to come and like turn on the circuit breaker and turn it off when it was being used because it could not turn itself off. Right now, our art teacher has to use the kiln either at the middle school or the elementary school, which is using their resources, not to mention just to take all of the ceramics that the kids do to either one of those schools on whatever time she can fit around her schedule and around the other two art teachers' schedule in order to bake our products and then bring them back. We are looking for grants to fund that. I do try to use grants as much as possible. But I wanted to put it in the budget because it was trying to go to a grant last year. That did not happen. So I want to make sure that we have that opportunity to purchase that kiln, yes?
Just a quick question. The line, the amount that I have on that line in the paper in front of me is $4,665. And on there, it's $4,389.
Can I please ask for the number of the line?
Of course, line number 41, I believe, if I'm looking at it correctly.
Yeah.
And I just want to know which figure was the correct one.
So you're looking at the $4,665?
Correct.
So I actually asked for an increase to that line today. I think, no, it wasn't that one, it was textbooks.
Well, the number behind you on the, is less than what's in front of us?
Right, you have 4389.64.
For the total proposed budget?
And what's in the budget lines here is 4665.
Just over to the left.
Okay.
Right, so. I believe that was the price of the kiln and this included the installation, but let me go back and double-check the notes in the previous version. But I think that was the difference. I think you've given the price on the equipment itself. I believe this included the installation.
Okay. I'm not 100% sure. I might have. Because there's more than one thing in that line because there's also the science equipment.
Right.
In there. And the kiln, and there's one, I believe there's some equipment for steam in there as well.
Okay.
So I do apologize for that. The next line for new equipment for the music. Again, we are trying to go to a grant for that. But this part, you know, safety and precaution, just in case we do not get grants. Our new music teacher who operates between the middle and the high school has asked for some coral risers, things that she really needs to be able to put on concerts at the high school. And the equipment that has been not available to us.
The grant that we are currently looking at is not announced until late March, early April. So it's tough for us in the budget cycle to know where that's going to fall. I'm cautiously optimistic. Last year, they were very generous with us. But I don't know how far that will go. Are the risers we have now in disrepair?
I was told yes. I did not physically see them myself. I think safety was a concern.
Well, I think risers in general are safety. Just saying. Most don't come with guardrails, unfortunately. Yeah, exactly, so.
The equipment for the nurse. We definitely have to think about getting some new beds. They have been patched up about as much as they can be patched up in there. A little wobbly, so that is why that is in the budget.
That's line 89.
Oh, 89, sorry.
Mrs. Gazer can't see behind her.
Oh, okay.
Need to give her the budget line.
Actually, I won't print out the, thanks for you. And of course, our admin, our, the workshops here are an increase of $2,100 over last year. Which are, to me, extremely important so that we can keep, you know, our professional development up and current. And I've gone to some really great workshops that I've started to implement here at the high school.
And the other increase would be the course reimbursement as well, an increase of. And that was line?
Line 116.
116? Yes. Line 116 is the course reimbursement. Line 118 is the workshop line.
Yes.
And we didn't have anything in that line last year in course reimbursement? We did not.
But we do, we did have admin taking courses, so that's going to be a move somewhere in our budget for this year.
Did we also mention line 42? An increase of $5,400? Metal smithing?
Currently, the benches that are in the STEM room?
I am sorry, I missed that one. Yes, so for steam, they require benches. They require certain furniture. That room used to be our wood shop, so it is actually set up for that. But as, so when our students are working, they're hunched over the way that those are. You need different furniture for the steam. Ones that, one where my, our students are sitting up and able to work, able to use their tool safety. If you're bending over trying to use things like that, it does become very unsafe for our students. They have been trying, but we've noticed that that is not conducive to what they're supposed to be doing.
So is this just for metal smithing? This furniture would be just for that purpose? It would be used by all of the programs that are-
Yes, and the robotics program.
That take place in that room. And are we having less students going to VOKE? I see a decrease there. We have had fewer students going to VOKE. The numbers that we've been, numbers of slots that we've been allocated are lower. And as I have looked at our trend of what we've been spending over the last few years, it's not been as much as we've been budgeting, so I've cut that down.
Just have one more question. Do we have a stipend line in here?
It's under co-curricular. Line 48.
Extracurricular?
So that's the total amount of stipends that we pay out at the high school is somewhere around $21,000?
About a stipend. At some point, could we get that line broken out just to show what stipends fall under that?
Would you like that for next Monday?
I would, yes.
Yeah.
Just because I really want to see, you know, there's some questions about stipends tonight. I'd kind of like to see district-wide what we're doing.
For all three schools?
Because it's hard, I mean, I sign these stipend contracts all the time, but it's hard to keep track of what. For administrative course reimbursement, since this has been a little bit of a topic here, this is probably a question I'd have for all three levels. I get that it's contractual. Do, let's pick on this one since we're looking at it. I'm going to assume that the principal has followed a course of study of educational leadership. Is that what your master's is in?
Yes, I have a double master's. I have one in justice and one in educational leadership.
So when the principal takes more courses, is it a new program of study that they're doing? Is it something that aligns to their administrative goals that you were looking at? You know, I mean, I mean, I get that they're contractually, they have the opportunity contractually to take in other courses. But could it be a course in business administration? You know, that's what I guess I'm wondering is.
It needs to be something that would contribute to the administrator's current position and benefit the program.
Okay. Because therefore it benefits the school.
Correct, yes.
That's where I'm going.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Just one final one. Line 129 dues from NEAS. I'm not budgeting anything this year.
That is 129.
That was actually moved out of our budget onto Melissa's budget, I believe.
Right, it has, it's in two places. It was in the district-wide lines. It had been double-budgeted. Okay. And so, rather than to have it in two places and because it does, while it's, right now for the high school, it does impact the district as far as our instructional improvement. It's under the district lines.
Okay.
And that will be cut down from the $15,000 that you saw last week for those. There's the, the 35, or 3365 is the annual dues. And then the site visits are those additional pieces. Instead of $15,000, it'll be $1,500 next year.
Right.
And so, Mrs. Moore discovered that this was, this is the budget that we, the line was put in for athletic trainer. Will that be taken out of here and put into the athletic budget?
What's the line?
It's line 46.
Line 46, thank you. Yes, that should be under 42, 1420, rather than 1,400, and that will change, yes. So that, your budget just down a little bit more? Yes.
When I was, I'm sorry.
I had it somewhere.
When I, as I was, I just wanted to show, as I was preparing the budget, these were the factors, these were the initiatives that the high school is going forward. So competencies, restorative justice, alternative learning, and our NEAS. So as I was doing the budget, everything with the decrease, the decrease, I wanted to make sure would fit into our initiatives for next year. And so that's how, I mean, it's not a huge increase, except for, of course, the personnel, or, I mean, or a decrease. But those were the four initiatives that we will be taking on next year.
Other questions? Thank you. Mrs. Peabody, I'm going to ask you to just grab one of the mics closest to you because I do have one more question about the athletic training line. Sorry. I just was thinking about this as I was looking at it.
Just grab this right there.
Yeah, I did one.
You can even sit down.
So when you, who is it again, the service provider?
For the, the quote I got was for access.
Access, okay.
My, to be honest with you, my mentor through the NHAs is Jamie Hayes.
Right.
He goes through it, so that's right.
So I guess my question is, so Newmarket doesn't have boys volleyball. We do now.
Right.
Newmarket doesn't have girls soccer, do they? They do? Okay, I can't remember. So is it by game? Like what's, how do they quote it?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly.
Okay, I'd like to find that out.
Sure.
And I'll tell you why I'd like to find that out. Because I'd like to know if that covers NHIA sanctioned events that aren't necessarily run by the high school. I.e. the Christmas tournament, i.e. JV basketball tournament. Because if they're quoting this for other schools, and other schools host these things at times too, would that cover those?
That's a great question.
Thanks.
And if it doesn't, what would be an addendum to have those covered?
I mean, we're not mandated to have them covered.
No, but it's-
But boy, it's nice. Because we get asked every, I'm sure you get asked all the time, where's your trainer? Pre-game, the minute somebody goes down, where's the trainer? So, be great. I mean, I can tell you that it's not an expense that we probably want to incur at that level because it's a fundraising event. But still, I'd just like to know if that's part of it. It's sanctioned, so, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Transportation.
If you want to go there, or you can, if you don't have a PowerPoint, if you want to sit here with us, you're welcome to. to sit here with us, you're welcome to.
Folks, just, I'm 10 minutes late doing this, I didn't, but the public hearing is closed. We're running an hour and 10 minutes. How's that?
You don't want this one?
No, it was actually...
Okay, I can't count, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
When I'm ready.
Okay.
Lynn Ellis, transportation director.
Just scoot your mic just a little bit.
I have had a little bit. Okay. Pretty much, I think, a lot of stuff has stayed the same. I've had a lot of help, only been in this position for two months. I've had major anxiety over this, because I've never done budget before. So I would really like, if somebody has questions, I can answer them, I don't...
We ballpark the salaries again at an average of a 2% increase across the board. Homeless transportation does see an increase, and actually, the usage hours, I've gone up to 110 hours on that because we are seeing increased usage there.
Just two families, we, it's $50 a day.
And so, and that's something that is federal law for us to provide. It's not something that even if we don't have it budgeted, we can say, no, thanks, we're not going there, we need to go there. We are looking at tracking that a little bit differently this year so that we can perhaps get a better handle on exactly where things go, but it's something that every district has been dealing with, and it doesn't look like it's going away, so. Are there increases?
Did the buybacks change? I guess I'll just jump in on line 6.
The insurance buybacks, the, and we, yes, and we've budgeted for more on the sick day buybacks because we have more people who are getting to that point where they may go over on the days for next year. Anticipating, because that's something that, under the handbook, would need to pay anyway, so it's a little bit easier if it's budgeted.
Okay. Are we fully staffed now for bus drivers?
No, we're down a driver.
We are not.
And that was essentially because of your move to the new position, right? Really, really to replace you as a driver.
No, not really, just, but losing...
Yeah, that's the, so when you moved into the...
I mean, we get that you still drive, but who's doing all your old stuff?
It's been reshuffled.
Shuffled, yeah.
But your position, when you moved to the coordinator's position, was never replaced as such. And so we have left that as a possibility for next year because if we had someone qualified walk in tomorrow, we'd probably be very excited.
I would be.
Applications, sau61.org, but at this point, we've not had the opportunity to fill that.
I just have a question regarding the fuel. They're showing a decrease of $5,000. Line 26, diesel people transportation, is that a wise decision to decrease by that much?
Especially since...
Well, I know, it's just I want to make sure that...
But knowing that our... Was that a typo?
Yeah, it was.
It was under 22,000.
Was that a typo?
We got hit by extra money from the town.
Honestly, I don't know.
Paying ourselves extra money for the town. Because we're not part of the town, as everybody knows.
I think that needs to be a 27, like it was for this year.
Rather than, so keep it the same.
Yes.
Line number 26.
We will see perhaps some savings with the new buses in consumption, but I wouldn't say that much.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Thank you.
And then one of my other questions I had was line 46. Why is that such an increase?
Boys volleyball?
Boys volleyball.
Yeah, athletic trips, volleyball, and also we have more trips potentially scheduled further away.
So they don't align with like the girls volleyball, so they can't all take the same?
No, they're different seasons.
Different seasons.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Spring and fall, I forgot.
Be a long wait between sets.
It would, you're right.
Well, also, you know, being in Division IV is probably the toughest division to be in travel-wise because you have so many small schools far away that you're obligated to play at times.
Whitefield?
Yeah.
Wasn't Whitefield one of them?
If it's small and far away, probably.
Okay, it is small, it is far away.
Just another question I have, why a decrease on line 58 for the salary for field trips for the high school of $1,500?
I thought those were all seeing the same.
Well, the field trip line itself went down too, so that's probably why the salary line went down.
Well, it was really up last year, I mean, it went from...
Was it the same line?
There was a very large jump last year, but looking in terms of what was expended versus what was budgeted, that was corrected to be a little bit closer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because the expenditure was 1,500.
Okay. That makes sense now.
So this is more of a question for Ruth Ellen. I expected to see line 1 go down significantly despite the 2% increase that's proposed. I would have thought that it would have gone down somewhere in the area of $22,000 since we're not paying a bus coordinator to drive any longer.
The bus coordinators' additional trips had been included in those other, the other trips.
Oh, it wasn't in that line?
It wasn't in that line.
It was spread out throughout.
It was spread out throughout, and those other trips are still...
Did we take that into consideration?
Sort of, I mean, and those trips are still happening, they're just getting covered differently, and so, and that line does still include the additional position, so...
All right. I also, just to reiterate, I think it's important right off the bat when we present this at the Budget Committee level to point out the bus coordinator's salary and why it looks like that.
Yes.
Because people are going to instantly think that that's, that's a huge raise.
And I had had that in the notes, and I think that didn't get captured.
And there was another position too, in the budget, the district budget this year, who would it have been? Somebody that had come in...
Might be Marx.
I was going to say Marx.
Okay. There was another one, just to keep that...
Well, and all of my new administrators came in at different positions, different levels than what had been budgeted for the person previously, and so it...
One of them, another one just jumped out, though, but...
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about the transportation budget? Are they all set?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right.
Did Mrs. Pibb have any questions? I know we closed the public hearing.
No, I closed the public hearing, I didn't have public participation, so...
I bet that's really loud on that microphone.
I know, it's loud.
I've been doing it all...
Is there any public participation at this time? No? Okay. I look at you because you're our only member of the public, I see you.
They are also people.
You can participate some more.
Okay, so our next...
Don't we have to vote? We have to vote to expend the money, yes?
Yes, we do need to vote to expend the money, having had the public hearing.
Oh.
So please don't close the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we can vote for that, though, in our regular meeting, yeah.
Yes, but this is the regular meeting, don't close it yet.
Do we have that figure at this point?
Do we have the number?
Or no, we don't need, we don't really need...
I don't think we need a figure, I mean, because my assumption was we'd look at what the over-spending was and be able to market more carefully.
I think we need the number.
Mrs. Morin thinks we need the number.
Well, it's hard to take money out of a trust fund if we don't have the...
Well, we'll have the, we have what our amounts are now, so, I mean, we can do...
But not all of the kids are encumbered yet because one is still within, still...
In transitioning, right.
Being determined where he or she will be going.
Okay.
We can do an up to.
Okay, yes. I would say an up to 125,000.
I'll make a motion that we remove 125, up to $125,000 from the trust, the special ed trust.
Special education expendable trust fund.
Yeah, that one. I was looking for my paper that had it written on it.
Motion by Mrs. Morin, second by Mr. Frida. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for that.
Our next meeting, which is, would really technically be like a regularly scheduled meeting, sort of an extra for budget presentations and some other things, will be next Monday, the 19th, right here at 6:30. Thank you to those of you who joined us from home tonight, and thank you to our administration team and Mrs. Tanner for being here this evening. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session 1 under RSA 91A:32AB&amp;J for contracts.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor, by roll?
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.